Let's do a quick world call first, Mr. Stenbridge.
Here.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, Ms. Berberaza.
Mayor Madam Chair.
Mr. Langham.
Here.
Ms. Weewell.
Here.
Mr. Valencia.
Here.
Okay, so just as a reminder to folks, we are a six-member board turning into a five-member board at 2:20. I ask for your support in moving us forward. Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, Madam Chair. Obviously.
Oh, actually, sorry. The question is whether we have the correct plans for Coldbrook. Is that correct?
Well, I would read this case back into the record and then we can discuss it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So that would be case BOA 1513036 with the address of 25 Coldbrook Street. At this point, I'll turn it over to Hoppier.
Yes, Madam Chair. So I just checked with staff. We do not have any plans. I don't think anyone's received those plans. For that situation, we'll have to do a short deferral to September 26th. And I've asked Stephanie to reach out to Mr. Christopher to ask where they sent those plans and we can kind of put it on to the next agenda.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until September 26th.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
If I just might make a comment, your description is accurate, though. It's a three-story building.
I understand what you're saying, but none of us have the plans. And so if we can't even present the plans, it would be a disservice to discuss it now. So I understand and appreciate your patience. It is two weeks from now, so I think we will see you then. Let me proceed with the vote. Thank you. I don't know where I am in the vote now. We finished? Did we finish voting? I'm sorry.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, sorry. I got interrupted. Let's start over. Motion to defer was Mr. Valencia. I had a second. Let's start over then with Mr. Stenbridge.
That will be a yes.
Thank you. Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Here also votes yes, motion carries. Next case.
For want to case that being case BOA 1419819 with the address of 30 Dimick Street, is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Sam Dennis, and I'm with Platt Anderson Freeman Architects. And I'm here to present this request for the Dimick Center. In essence, we're looking at a building that has an existing occupancy of daycare. The Dimick Center would like to allow for clinical use in the building as well. And their intention is to put a vaccination clinic in the basement. And the Dimick Center is a community health care center which provides health care to the community. They've been doing that for a long time. They are very well-run. And we hope that everybody will see this as a reasonable request. The neighboring buildings, all part of the Dimick campus, many of them, most of them have clinical uses attached to them or allowed, authorized. And so we just want this building to have the same latitude or authorization.
Okay. That sounds fine. I think you can pause there. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to proceed to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. I understand that there was a great amount of community support for this proposal. The applicant also went before the Roxbury Neighborhood Council and received their support, as well as being in contact with organizations in Jamaica Plain as well, to the proximity to that neighborhood. With that, I'll defer to the board this time. Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1291555 with the address of 18 Birchcroft Road. The applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
This is Kyle Smith of Sotero Law. Business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. I also have the owner, Said Anaya, on the call as a panelist, as well as the architect, Adam Glassman, to field questions. Madam Chair, we have a 4,000-square-foot parcel which is in substantial keeping with other-sized parcels in our vicinity. As you can see from the site plan, we lie in a 2F-5,000 sub-district. But as is noted on the plans, we are the threshold between a 2F-5,000 sub-district and a 1F-6,000 sub-district. So we are arguably in a denser form of use as far as a zoning code, but 2F-5,000 is applicable. The proposal is to take down an existing single-family structure and erect a two-family structure. The FAR allowable is .5. The proposed structure would have a FAR proposed of .92. Our footprint of our structure is approximately 28 and 1/2 feet in width by approximately 46 and 1/2 feet in depth, or a footprint of about 1,350 square feet. Notable other violations, there's a 20-foot front yard setback. We have a proposal of just an excess of 10 feet to the front of the structure with 3 feet to the front of the decking. You see the little entrance way and the cover way on the plans on your screen. That is the 3 feet and 10 feet respectively. Side yard required setbacks are 10 feet left and right. The proposal is a left foot, left side to structure with 5 feet to the deck that you can see to the rear on the elevation that you see there. And then 10 feet to the right side of the structure with 3 feet to the decking that you'll see on your elevations to the right. 40 feet is required for a rear setback. Our proposal is 23 and 1/2 feet to the structure and 15 and 1/2 feet to the cantilever deck that you'll see to the rear of the structure. We front on both Birchcroft Street, which is the street facing the structure as you see the elevations currently. We also abut to the rear on George Street, and the proposal is to have an entranceway off-street off of George to permit four off-street parking spaces as is required by code with in an orientation of 2 and 2 in tandem. So we have a three-story structure, 2 and 1/2 being allowable. You can see the proposed roof pitch with dormers slightly set back to hopefully reduce massing. And we've provided 89 letters of support specifically from our abutters to our immediate left, immediate right, rear, and front. And that is a brief synopsis of the plans.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. This went through a lengthy community process. Our office held three abutters meetings, the first of which was on March 16th of 2022, May 24th of 2022, and then August 18th of 2022. Based on pushback from the community and feedback from the abutters, the applicant has scaled back the project three times after meeting with the abutters, as well as the East River Street Neighborhood Association. During abutters meetings, community meetings with the East River Street Neighborhood Association, there were many concerns cited such as the upkeep of the property, parking, and concerns about a proposed multifamily not fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. As the community process progressed, the owner scaled back the height, footprint, and square footage and the bedroom count of the proposed structure, as well as increasing the amount of off-street parking. The original design proposal was on August 7th of 2021, and the final modified design was finished on June 12th, 2023. The ERSNA has been in opposition, and many neighbors during the abutters process have also expressed their opposition as well. That being said, we've received, I haven't counted, 75 letters of support from the applicant, which include abutters, immediate abutters to the left, right, and rear of the property. We've also received many letters and signatures of opposition as well to the abutters process. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
A few raised hands here. One second. I'll go with Sharon and Christina.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Forebin, homeowner of 30 Birchcroft Road. Speaking on behalf of the community on Birchcroft Road, homeowners, we oppose this project due to the violation that this project posed, the parking, which is insufficient for the residents as well as the neighbors. The height of the project also competes sunlight and satellite dishes that exist, as well as the side decks which encroaches the privacy of the neighbors. We met with Said in his apartment multiple times, and he continuously ignore our recommendations and issues. So we are asking the board to have the Said in his apartment reduce the size of the property.
Give Ms. Forebin.
Variations of the.
Said. Said?
He's the owner, so if we could hear a public testimony, that would be appreciated.
Christina?
Yes, this is Christina Ellison. I'm at 39 George Street. I am not aware of 79 adjacent homeowners in support of this project at all. Everybody in my surrounding area opposes this project because of the size. It does not fit with the character and structures existing. There is already an existing parking problem on George Street due to a three-family being gang to a six-family. And there's not enough space now for people to park. And if you add, I believe it was 11 bedrooms in this neighborhood, it's maybe a three-bedroom house is the norm, there's two to five cars per household. We cannot accommodate that much more cars on either Birchcroft or George Street. The other thing is with the increase in congestion of people in the area, it also increases potential crime. 910 Andrea Road was changed from a three to a six-bedroom home without community input. And the ambulance from overdose or whatever was at that house every two weeks. Police surveying the area for drug activity and sales. And there's just compounded. You're congesting an area, you're creating an eyesore because it doesn't fit with the housing, the type of housing in this area.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Can we please proceed with more information?
No additions of these hands. Oh, I have no additions of these hands.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, would you like me to respond to any of those objections?
Briefly, please.
Certainly. Well, as it relates to parking, as the board can see, we don't have a cited violation for insufficiency of off-street parking. We are zoning code compliant. While we do propose three stories where 2 and 1/2 is allowed, we are not cited for excessive height. The bedroom count was incorrectly cited by the person as 11. We are at 7. Issues related to crime in a neighborhood, a proponent does not create nor can we directly solve. Issues of parking as well are issues that the abutter or the proponent does not directly have the ability to control. But again, we are sufficient for required off-street parking.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve with BPDAs design review with special attention to the site plan and amount of parking spaces to allow for more usable space.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. May I ask a question on the proviso?
Yes.
As it related to the attention to the site plan for the increased amount of usable space and parking, is the proposal to reduce the amount of off-street parking in the sake of increasing the usable open space? What is the design of the early intent of the proviso?
I'm letting BPDAs staff look at the site planning. And I know there's motivation to ensure that we have permeable surface.
Yes.
Usable open space for now, the two-family home. And so it's for them to have discussion with the overall kind of urban planning of the area to see whether for, you know, back-to-back spaces is needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1477573 with the address of 28A Ridlon Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes, Madam Chair. Kyle Smith, again, back-to-back matters. Sotero Law, business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. I also have the owner of the property as well, David Bello, who is also a panelist.
Are you proceeding?
Yes, ma'am. So in this particular matter, we have a 5,570-square-foot lot. The proposal is to erect a single-family structure with just general usable livable square footage in the basement and then two stories above. We have a width of the structure of approximately 28 square feet by again a depth of about 44 square feet, very similar in footprint size to the last matter I just presented on. Running through the noted violations, we have pre-existing non-conformities as far as lot width and lot frontage are concerned. 60 feet is required. Presently, the lot is just in excess of 40 feet. There's a floor-area ratio permissible of .5. The proposed structure would have a FAR ratio of approximately .62. We have a side yard insufficiency, both laterally left and right, 10 feet of space distance is required between lot size and structure. And at our pinch points left and right, we have approximately 7.4 feet and 7.34 feet. As of note, if you do go to the site plan immediately above, the owner is the, sorry, the proponent owner of 28 Ridlon also controls 28 Ridlon, which is a structure that is pre-existing to its right. The proposal is to memorialize and put in off-street parking to service both proposed structures. As you can see, basically granting an easement from end-intended owner of 28 Ridlon and 28 Ridlon to then memorialize the access per parking. So it would be a proposed shared parking easement to provide off-street parking to the rear, hence we are not cited with parking insufficiency. And as a, we do have a letter from our abutter immediately across the street.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, but Bob D'Amico did speak on this project if he's on.
Yes, Madam Chair. Bob D'Amico, BTD. I have reviewed the plans, and they do work. There's enough maneuverability in the parking area. So what I'd like to go on record is approving this request.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing no other questions from the board, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on July 13th where there was a small attendance. We received one letter of support afterwards, and we believe that we've shared that with the board. And that's about all the community feedback we have at this time. Defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to have no raised hands.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project with BPDAs review and special attention to improving and increasing the usable open space.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board.
Next, we have case BOA 1483633, the address of 753 American Legion Highway. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Is he sketching? Hefrenin with?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I don't know why my video is not showing, so apologies there. I'm Attorney Jim Hefrenin of Rich May PC of 176 Federal Street in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of Ellie on American Legion Highway LLC, which is the service station on the corner of Mount Hope Street and American Legion Highway and is owned by Ellie Lakkis and is run with his son Eddie. The request here today is quite straightforward. As you can see on the plan shown on there, it is a, in this back, on here, the back-left area where there is insufficient side yard and rear yard setback to repair and install a new retaining wall along those back lines. This is really to just to continue to improve the site and site safety. As my client acquired the site, they're looking to clean up the site and continue operating it at its present use. Happy to go through further details on that. And I'll just note that we had an abutters meeting on August 1st and discussions with the Mount Hope neighborhood as well.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Diana Bronchek with the Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we defer judgment to the board. The project did hold an abutters meeting on Tuesday, August 1st, where three abutters were in attendance. One was the leader of the Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association and American Legion Highway Coalition. Highway Coalition. At this time, we received no other state, we received no statements of opposition or support. The only question that came up from the abutters meeting was if the project could look at the curb cut that, the third ramp on the corner of Mount Hope and the American Legion Highway, if the owner could look at putting ballards up at that curb to make it less dangerous for pedestrians. And that was something that the project lead said that they would look into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Ellen, Ellen? Looking to get testimony here? If not, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I am so sorry to bring this up, but the BPDA, I don't know if Jeff Hampton's on, had made a recommendation, but it's just not.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
But I think it's not relevant right now because what I saw was detailed of the retaining wall, so I just wanted him to comment before I made a motion.
Yeah. I mean, it could be very straightforward on this appeal, but the lack of plans and the showing of the grade change and everything, we just didn't have enough information to make a really good assessment. So we recommended denial without prejudice only because we didn't have any elevations or anything showing grade changes. We really have no idea what's going there other than what's, you know, in the application.
Right. But they do show a section of that retaining wall, so is it possible to approve the proviso that a grade change, a grading plan be submitted?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay.
If they show some, so if they show something we didn't see.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have it.
Yeah.
So if that's, if you feel comfortable with that, then we'll be comfortable with that.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right. I hear a motion coming.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant submits a grading plan and detailed drawings of the retaining wall system.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1502802 with the address of 76 Ashford Street. It's the applicant, it's also an Article 80 project. It's the applicant or is represented, or their representative present to explain.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of City Realty and Rise Construction, who are the developers for the proposed project. And I also have Dan Artigius, who you'll hear from from Embark, who's the architect on the proposal. As was described, the proposal before you, what went through a full Article 80 process and the plan, and you're looking at a rendering here, is to demo an existing one-story commercial building and then to construct a mixed-use building. This building will house 254 proposed residential units. It has over 13,000 square feet of amenity space and 1,875 square feet of retail space. It would also house 63 off-street parking spaces in the building. This particular building is located on Ashford Street. This is in a light industrial area and has a number of commercial or older industrial properties in and around it. This is one of the largest lots in the area. It's comprised at 35,806 square feet. It's located near BU's campus and BU's buildings as well as the commercial area and some residential. This project is really the gateway to the new proposed West Station by Mass DOT, and the developers have been in conversations between the city and Mass DOT and this project for the better part of five years. I want to talk a little bit about some of the benefits and the affordability of this project. So as part of this proposal, we have 36 IDP units, the majority of which, 21 of them are at 70% AMI. The rest are between 60 and then a few at 40 and one at 50. We also have one affordable commercial retail space with a preference for a local community business. And then, as I had mentioned, this will have a direct connection that will have pedestrian, bus, and bicycle connection to the new proposed West Station. When that property is sold to Mass DOT, the proceeds will go directly to the IDP fund up to $4.5 million. That would bring the affordability of this project at over 20% in total. The project also has a number of features. It has 312 white parking spaces. It has a low, a gold lead target standard. It has, it is at 16 stories plus a penthouse, a 17-story building. And the total lot size I had mentioned is 35,806 square feet, but 16,500 of that is for the connection to the West Station. 25% of the parking spaces will have EV charging stations, and all of the parking will be accessed via Ashford Street. I want to talk a little bit about the process that we went through. So obviously, this project went through large project Article 80 process. We had three public meetings, three meetings with our IAG, our Impact Advisory Group, meetings before the BAIA, and the Alston Civic Association as well. And then the I-90 Task Force, which we met with on multiple occasions over the years, and that's made up of many different community stakeholders to go over this West Station connection proposal. We also, as part of our mitigation package, have $75,000 towards a blue bike station and area road improvements, $100,000 to City of Boston Parks Department, $25,000 to the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture to foster those areas and the arts community in Alston, and then an additional $50,000 go on a local office. At this, and I just want to touch upon the zoning variances we're here for. One is for use, so we are proposing MFR, and so we do need a use variance for that. Open space, 50 square feet per unit would be required, and we're at 10. FA hour at 6.2, and then height, we're at 215 square feet, so we would need variances for those areas. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dan Artigius, who's a panelist and the architect in the project, to go over his plans as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Artigius with Embark. We're at 580 Harrison Ave in the South End. The slide in front of you shows a view of the building overlooking the future West Station. A couple of important aspects of this is, as Jeff mentioned, the over 16,000 square-foot area of the site that's going to be dedicated to bus, pedestrian, and bike access to West Station. You could see that at the bottom right-hand corner of the slide where the roadway comes up and the landscape buffer is proposed, and we'll get to that in a couple of slides. But additionally, in terms of the design of the building, we looked at it as a building that would be viewed from all four sides, not only from I-90 and West Station, but also from Com Ave and from both sides, from BU's campus and the Alston neighborhood. So a full 360 application of the facade, creating larger openings on the two ends, and then more residential penetration on the sides facing BU and the residential neighborhood. In addition to the residences, we're proposing a large amenity space on the eighth floor, and you can see that exposed in the cutout above the brick base of the building. And that's both an interior and exterior amenity space to provide open space to the residents and then as well as local amenities in terms of large community room as well as sit-down spaces for people to work within the building. And then in addition to the eighth floor amenity space, we're also providing another amenity space on the penthouse. You can see that at the top of the building, at the front, overlooking the city of Boston. If we could flip to page six, it's two slides from here, please. So just to talk about the I-90 interchange plan, we worked very, very closely with Mass DOT, the MBTA, as well as the I-90 interchange project team to look at this site and then the West Station next to it. And this was developed as the prime site for this West Station access. If we could go two slides down from that. Just outlining our site plan and showing the breadth of the site that's being taken up by the West Station access. And we came up with this width based on input from Mass DOT, MBTA, and the interchange project plan to make sure that they have enough access or enough space on the site for the West Station access. If we could go to the next slide. We looked at this project and worked on it very closely with the BPDA in terms of designing the plan for both the current condition of the site and the developed condition of the site, and then the future West Station development. So this is an interim condition, so by the, from the time that our building is built to when West Station is fully realized. And a couple of important aspects of this is the 60, the 66-foot and 65-foot setback from our north property line, planned north property line. That includes the 60-foot setback that we are providing for West Station and then an additional six feet that we're pulling the building back to provide additional pedestrian access. And from day one, we'll have our full pedestrian and bike parking access as well as a landscape buffer along the building, which will be the final build condition for the access to West Station. And that provides a fully activated facade on this, on this side of our building, buffered by amenity spaces, our bike room, as well as two retail spaces to the rear, and we'll see that in the next slide. But additionally, on the north side of this plan, there will be a landscape buffer to our neighbors to the, to the west, and a retaining wall that will be built to, built prior to West Station but in preparation for West Station. And then at the behest of the BPDA and working with what this, this side yard condition will be in the interim, looking at it being a staging area not only for the construction of our building, but open space for staging of the construction of West Station. So looking at it holistically from day one to final development of West Station, and this was really worked with BPDA Transportation as well as Mass DOT. Next slide, please. So this is a slide plan of the final build condition, and we have a representation of what the final programming in the side yard could be. The final development will be designed by Mass DOT, but what we, what the importance of this slide is to show that we have enough space for two bus lanes, pedestrian access on both sides of those bus lanes, as well as a two-way dedicated cycle track to provide both vehicular, bike, and pedestrian access to the future West Station. And then in terms of our building, as I was kind of alluding to in the last slide, we have fully activated facade from the building entry off of Ashford Street through the lobby and amenity space, ample bike, bikes, bike parking in compliance with the City of Boston bike parking regulations and guidelines, as well as two retail spaces, one of which will be a, a below-market-rate community benefit retail space, developed for day one but also for future service to West Station. If we could just go back to slide number three, please, and I'll finish up the presentation there. One more. Yeah. Thank you. And this is just a view from Ashford Street, from the corner of Ashford Street, looking at the future development of the site, the landscape buffer both against the building as well as against our resident neighbors, and in the future of the activity of the bus and pedestrian access, really looking towards the future of what this neighborhood could be, evaluating the density of development that is requisite with a transit-oriented, a perfect-located, transit-oriented development, and really excited for the future of the neighborhood. So I'll turn it over to, any questions from the board? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay.
I have one, I have one question.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Drago, you mentioned that the retail space is going to be affordable. How do you define affordability for commercial spaces?
So we're going to keep it well below market rate. It was not, it was not part of the IDP number. It was just something we gave as a community benefit. So one, it was important to the community that it be a local business, and it'd be important that it be below market value. So obviously, we start putting this out and get somewhere, well, obviously, first, preference is local, but it'll be below market value for space for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Lagan.
You're welcome. I just have one small question. I just want to know exactly where that West Station is going to be located at.
Dan, do you want to?
Sure. Yep. If we could pull up, pull up slide number six, please. So this is the plan developed by the I-90 Interchange Project. West Station is, if you see on the slide where we have the pink box and it says site, directly to the north of that, you can kind of see a curved kind of amoeba-like red box. That would be, that's the West Station platform. So the platform and the station itself will be above the tracks, and then the tracks will be low. There's quite a bit of grade change from Ashford Street down to the existing Beacon Yards, Rail Yards. So the site, the West Station access will slope up slightly to provide the plane, the train platform, but that's, that would be the development of West Station. And then all of the, you can see the, the yellow and blue reorientation of I-90, the Pike, and then the future connector roads up to Cambridge Street. It's right off of, in terms of where it is located on Com Ave, it's right off of Packard's Corner. Malvern Street connects to the curve at Packard's Corner. If you want to go back one slide here, you can see where, where that, where that turn is and where Malvern Street is located. So we're right on the edge, next to the BU Field House.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, also in Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, here to testify that going through their BPDA community engagement process, the applicant for 76 Ashford did meet with the Alston Civic Association. After the course of their various meetings, the Alston Civic Association decided to vote in opposition to this project. The grounds of opposition are, among others, density and height, impacts of the existing neighborhood, parking and traffic, publicly accessible green space, and opportunities for additional off-campus student housing, which the ACA feels will put additional upward pressure on rents, making the units less affordable for local residents. The ACA did send that letter into the board. The board should have that letter on file, and I believe their president, Anthony Di Sodoro, should be on to testify after myself as well. With that said, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
No additional raised hands. One second. Tony, and then Lizzy Torres.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Di Sodoro, representing the Alston Civic Association. Yeah, I just want to echo Frank's comments and just add a little bit more, the membership did vote in opposition pretty decisively against this project. One of the concerns about the height and density that you see is it's becoming precedent-setting in our community. All along the Mass Turnpike, there are towers that are being built, even on Soldiers Field Road, and we just had another proposal right near this area for another tower to be built. So obviously, the precedent setting, you know, we're not a downtown neighborhood, and people are starting to get very concerned that buildings continue to get higher and higher, and these downtown-type buildings are really taking away from the character of our community. But other than that... But other than that, absolutely public, parking and traffic, publicly accessible green space, and then people were citing, there's been a lot of discussion lately, Madam Chair, of course, about the impact of 60,000 students living off-campus and, and the upward pressure that's putting on rents for regular residents in our community, and with its location directly close to BU. I know, I know City Rail T has been very good about undergrads, but graduate students, nothing wrong with graduate students, however, it's, it's, it's additional upward pressure on rents, they are outbidding local residents, and that's becoming a very tenuous situation in terms of affordability. So our membership voted in the majority to, to oppose the project.
Thank you, sir. Any other raised hands?
Bob, and then I've got Lizzie, if you still want to talk.
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, bother me with BTD. I look, maybe I missed it, but I haven't seen any spaces with regards to handicap parking. Is there any proposed?
Yes, there are. If you could go down to, I believe it's page 15 or 16, please. The, the handicap accessible spaces are within the basement, so the parking is utilizing the, the grade change. So access off of Ashford Street, there's the surface parking spaces, there you go, right there, the parking.
I see.
And then they're directly adjacent to the elevator lobby and the main building elevators. And then we also have a semi-automatic parking, parking system for the remainder of the 63 spaces.
Could you increase that to five rather than just three?
We could do four, but we could look at doing five, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica?
Bob?
Bob spoke.
Yep, Lizzie?
Yes.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lizzie.
Yes, Lizzie, please.
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Lizzie Torres. I'm a resident over at 446 Cambridge Street, so I'm not too far away from this project. I, you know, with all respect to our, my colleague here on this call, he did not send out the vote for the Allson Civic Association until 4:45 PM last night, which did not provide ample time for every member to actually vote on this project. And I was given a heads-up by our artists who have been working in partnership with this project to submit that we do still support this project, and there were many of us who have submitted support of this project and did not have the time to send it for the 9:00 AM deadline this morning that Mr. De Sodaro sent for everybody. So I would just like to make sure that it is documented that, one, as a renter, as a person who has been a student, undergrad graduate, and now is a quote-unquote "regular resident" of Boston, that I fully support this project because new projects are the reason why I've been able to stay in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands.
All right. I'm sorry. Could I, could I respond to that?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez with the Carpenter Senior, I'd like to go and reference those four of this project. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Minor, you have to pause that.
I, I think, Mr. De Sodaro, the point is she supports the project, but we, we're not going to get into when we sent out communications and whatnot. Mr. Drago?
Madam Chair, I also, just two points that had come up. One was on rising rents. I mean, this project really has a strong affordability component to it. I mean, we are at, without including the commercial space, we're at over 20%. And it also, I heard a couple of questions about height and density. Better remember that 16,500 square feet of this lot is dedicated to go to MassDOT, which would then in turn create additional units of affordable housing. So that made the project go higher instead of wider in that respect. And then I also know, just to point out, I believe Nick Carter wanted to speak from the BPDA. I believe he's now as an attendee. I don't know if his hand is up.
Do you want me to go to him? Oh, you have the BPDA, yes, yeah. Okay, tried to add you as a panelist earlier, one second. Can you accept it when it appears and then mute yourself?
Thank you. I must have stepped away from my computer when it got the prompt. But thank you so much for this time to speak. In regards to the building, as the counsel for this project mentioned, a very large part of this project is dedicated to an important future part of West Station, which will be a really important infrastructure piece in the future of the Allson Brighton and Boston as a whole. And that will certainly help to address quite a few of the concerns around density and transportation in this neighborhood. We feel that this is an appropriate building, an appropriate height, and an appropriate use at this location for all the reasons that have been mentioned before, but it's an important part to adding more housing in this neighborhood, as well as the city of Boston as a whole. Again, we understand the concerns of the neighborhood, but there's been a very robust process for this building, and we believe that it's addressed all of these issues through that process. And again, feel that the need for the land here for the future West Station is very important to the future of the Allson, Allson Brighton mobility, as well as the success of transportation as a whole in Boston.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I do, I do have one for Nick at the BPDA, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I read that for the IDP to stay affordable, that there is a term associated to that before it expires. Is this, is this common? Because this is the first time that on the BPDA Board memorandum, I'm starting to see that there's a term, term associated to them.
Are you talking about the IDP and just sort of the general covenant that we have? I think.
Covenant, correct. That there's, is it 50-year, it's a 50-year term and it expires? And how does that fit to ensuring affordability?
So can I actually, can I actually speak on that? Because I used to work.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm talking, I'm asking just the BPDA board, if that's okay. Yes, Nick, if you can please explain to the board.
Absolutely. And, you know, just to be clear, Lizzie would be a great person to speak on this. She did, she was one of our housing compliance officers, so she has a depth of knowledge on this topic. That said, that is our standard agreement for these projects. It's the one we use across the city, and it's the one we've been using for a very long time. We do believe that it protects affordable housing in the city of Boston, especially when these are ownership units. You know, those agreements will stay in place for a very long time. Additionally, we are, you know, looking at how we do IDP at the moment, so certainly the, the length of the term is something that we're looking at. But again, that is our standard agreement for inclusionary development policy units at the BPDA.
So what happens after 50 years?
I'm afraid that's not my topic of expertise, and I certainly haven't been here long enough to.
I'm going to suggest that that is an offline conversation.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm, it's not connected, I mean, it's a good question, and we should get an answer to it, but I'm not sure if putting Nick on the spot here is probably the best.
Thank you. I, I agree, there are better people at the BPDA for that, and we're happy to get those answers for you.
Okay. So are there any other questions about this project? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion of approval.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Betabaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Could I?
Thank you. Before we move on to the rediscussions, scheduled for 11:30, going to the hearings for 1 PM, scheduled for 1 PM, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals, for deferrals from the, from that hour. Hearing none, we will go to the rediscussions, scheduled for 11:30, the first being case BOA 1435105, the address of Five Swift Terrace. The applicant and or their representative, the president, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lucas, Lucas Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the project proponent, Sharp Swift LLC, who are represented by David Lang and Evan Lang, the proponents. And with us today is the project architect, Pedro Lucas, from Zephyr Architects. Before you on the screen are images of the proposed new structure at Five Swift Terrace, which would include demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of this new three-story, five-unit building with five parking spaces, integrative garage accessed there on the left side of the building. You'll see in the front, there's a setback garden area to create some green space in the front, and in the rear of the building as well in the site plan, you'll see that there has been effort made to retain some open space. The zoning violations are fairly minimal in degree. There's a rear yard insufficiency. There is insufficient off-street parking. The requirement is 1.75 per dwelling unit, but you will note, if you look at a map, that this property is nearly adjacent to the Wood Island Blue Line stop, so we're proposing one per dwelling unit. The project also requires an iPod special permit, as there is an iPod overlay currently pending in East Boston. And I'll talk a little bit about how efforts have been made to comply with as many aspects of the pending plan as possible. And the FAR excessive, the maximum in this sub-district is one, and this proposes 1.46, so it's a fairly minor deviation from the maximum FAR. The mix of units is there's one smaller one-bedroom on the ground floor adjacent to the garage entrance there on the right-hand side of the image, that's 660 square feet. There are two, two-bedroom units of approximately 900 square feet, and two, three-bedroom units of 1,250 square feet, so nice mix of unit sizes for this particular area. Next slide. This is the existing site plan. Just want to orient you to this property. The gray-shaded area is the existing house. The white open area to the sort of right of that is an open patio area, and then the lot is L-shaped. The property on the corner, One Swift Terrace, is also an L-shaped lot, so that building you see behind the patio area is the neighbor's garage, and the house at number one is there on that rounded corner. So this lot is L-shaped, as is the adjoining lot, so they're interlocking Ls, if you will. So this is the proposed site plan with the new structure thereon, which depicts a little bit better the, oh, there we go, the L shape of the lot. So on the lower portion, left-hand side of the image, is the building jetting out a little bit in the back, but we have a 20-foot rear setback at that portion of the lot to the neighbor to the back. And then the top part of the L shape is three feet setback from the rear yard, and that is the neighbor's garage there in the back. You'll note across the front of the building, there's a 10-foot private way, and then there's a sidewalk. The current condition is that it's completely occupied by a brick wall and a patio area is going to be opened up, so the sidewalk is going to be much more open in dimension and feel, which allows for that landscaped area in the front, and just an enhancement of the existing condition. Next slide, and I believe I will turn it over to Pedro Lucas, the architect, to talk about the floor plans and the programming and the design inspirations that Zephyr brought to bear. Pedro?
I think if you can focus on the context, too, with the neighborhood, that would be helpful, not so much detail on floor plans.
Sure, I'll ask Pedro to do that as well.
Sure, yeah, I can expand a little bit, and I'll try to summarize. So as Mark said, we're proposing a five-minute building. We'll have one one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms. The one-bedroom will be on the ground floor, adjacent to the parking. There will be one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom in levels two and three. Levels three have access to a private roof deck. Level two, they have terrace and access to a balcony. And I'd like to just briefly mention some important aspects of the design decisions. We believe that the proposed project is thoughtful, and all of our decisions were made carefully to ensure it complements and enriches the, the immediate neighborhood. For example, the introduction and placement of the gable reflects that six of the seven neighbors on Swift Terrace have gabled roofs. We've additionally utilized the gable to break up the massing. In compliance with the zoning ordinance, our height, 31 foot six, in three stories, matched the context, but we designed a mansard to soften the impact of the third story as it slopes away from, from the street and both of our neighbors. And as Mark mentioned, talk briefly about these setbacks. We are multimodal, we are zero, multimodal compliant, we're at zero on the gable end, we're at two feet away from lot line in the front, front yard setback at the mansard. We are abutting that 10-foot private way, like Mark mentioned, that is located between sidewalk and our lot line. We did, we are aligned with One Swift Terrace for street continuity in the front facade. Our side yard setbacks are compliant, but we're providing three feet on the southeast, which is plan, I guess, plan west here, to our left here. Six, six feet northeast facing One Swift, in zero along the tail of the property, facing One Swift's garage. We have increased the northeast setback in the latest iteration to add a belief between our proposed project and One Swift, which encroaches one feet over the lot line, and you can see that on the plan right. Our rear yard setback is compliant on the tail end of the property, and it's non-compliant on the narrow end. We are three feet along the narrow end, and that is six feet from the abutting One Swift street garage, which is not present in this one, but I believe you could see it in the survey. And I think with that, I'll turn, turn that, turn back to you, Mark, for questions.
And Madam Chair, if I could just very quickly address the pending East Boston plan, and mindful of the BPDA's recommendation, when this was originally proposed as a somewhat larger project, but we, we have carefully, of course, taken a look at all of the pending plan requirements, and we're compliant with maximum number of units in the plan is six, we have five. Maximum height is three stories, we have three stories. Maximum building depth of 70 feet, we're at 55 on the left and 32 on the right. Minimum permeable space is 30%, we have 30%. We've achieved near-compliance with maximum lot coverage, 60% lot coverage is in the plan, we have 68. Minimum front yard, 2.5 feet, we have two feet. Minimum rear yard, 33% of lot depth, and we're at 27%. So we've, we've strived to achieve as much compliance with the pending plan as possible. And again, the zoning violations are minor in degree.
Thank you for offering that. Any, any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mark, can you please tell us, or the architect, what's in front of the property? I'm trying to understand, I know it's, there's a property that is, the sub-district is CE, and I can't tell on the Google map what's inside that large enclosed gated fence.
Across the street?
Yep.
That is the neighbor's property where they park vehicles.
Okay, so that, there's just, so it's, there's no kind of industrial use? It almost feels like.
No, it's sort of.
There's a large parking lot, okay.
Yeah, it, it, it's a residential property with a, a large fence that's across the street, if I'm imagining what you're taking a look at. if I'm imagining what you're taking a look at.
Okay.
But further down, further down Swift Terrace, as you go down the street, the house next door, and then the building next door is a three-story condo building that's relatively new. So it's residential in character for sure, for certain.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
A question, Madam Chair. I am looking at the Google Maps, and I see a couple of big trees, trees in the back. Are those trees part of the property? And if so, what are your mouth of the trees?
Yes, David Lang. David, go ahead.
Hi, this is David Lang speaking. There are several trees that are not on our property line, which will not be affected or within our property parcel. And there is one tree that is on our parcel that we will be maintaining. We will also be adding a tree on our front lawn, and we will be applying through Tree East for two new sidewalk trees as well for maintenance of all the existing trees, and then three additional trees.
Thank you.
I have a question if those who have spoke are finished. When I was listening to the explanations and the corrections of the zoning violations, I didn't hear anything on the maximum building width. I apologize if I missed it. Can you speak to that? Is that still a violation?
So it's not a zoning violation, but one of the planning principles outlined in the pending plan is maximum building width of 50 feet. We have 64 feet, but that in part has to do with the L shape of the lot. So the lot is longer across the front, and then has the little L jog in the back, whereas some of the other lots are, you know, more traditional square lots, ours is longer across the front, thus being able to make the building a little wider, if you will. But yeah, the maximum building width in the plan is 50 feet. We have 64, but it's not a zoning violation.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I open it up to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, Mayor's Office defer to the board at this time. ONS hosted an abutters meeting in 2022. Importantly, there were no abutters present at the time. The applicant then went on to meet with the Harborview Neighborhood Association in March and April of 2023. The group ultimately voted 11 in favor and 19 opposed to the proposal. Residents noted that they appreciated the developer in trying to work with the neighborhood and making changes. However, there were still lingering concerns regarding the density that was being brought before them. At this time, our office likes to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes, I wanted to respond, Madam Chair, members of the board, to Ms. Baraz's question. The building across the street, right at the corner, has been very controversial, to say the least. There's stories going around that he has expanded on property that he doesn't own. And he does store commercial vehicles in that building, and it's closed off. You can't see in it. And quite frankly, it's a bight on that whole area, which is really quite nice. And I just wanted to respond to Ms. Baraz's question because it's called a dump, and it is disgusting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, Sarah, and then we'll go to the caller 781.
Hi, good afternoon. For starters, to Mr. D'Amico, I live in that dump, and I got all variances from this very same ZBA. So please stop commenting on where I live. You've got a lot of nerves, sir.
Excuse me, are we talking about the same property?
Secondly, there wasn't an abutters meeting, and abutters were there. There were many abutters.
Are you talking about the property across the street?
Thirdly, the tree.
It's my question. Are you talking about the property across the street?
It's fine, Mr. D'Amico.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's where I live.
Yeah, if you live in there, you're in a sad state.
Okay, Mr. D'Amico, you're good. Sorry, Ms. Perdido.
Well, Ms. Dawn, it's funny, it's just so amusing that you find this so amusing.
I don't find it amusing, that's why I'm trying to cut him off.
It's funny because you're laughing. You're laughing.
I'm trying to cut him off so that you could speak, so please proceed.
Thank you for your courtesy. I appreciate it. The trees that Mr. Lang talks about, he can't put them on the sidewalk. First of all, there is a hydrant there. Secondly, handicap people, you cannot put a tree on a sidewalk like that because handicap people can't get around. And the tree in the back, there is no way that he can elevate the way that he wants to on the other person's property with not, with not injuring that tree or doing something to that tree. I have a question for Mr. Lang or his attorney. That one-bedroom apartment, can you speak to it a little more, please?
Are we still taking testimony? You gonna open it up?
I think we're still, we're still taking testimony, so the applicant can circle back later.
Okay, I'll go to the caller. I'm trying to unmute you. I believe you have to press star three, but if the caller 781-500-2030, can you, if you are looking to give testimony, can you press star three on your phone? Okay, I'll go to Caroline.
Hi, am I on now?
Hello? Yes, Caroline.
Okay, I think the speaker on the phone seems to have gotten on, so why don't we let him finish, Ms. Bartlett, and then we'll turn to you? Caller with 781-500, can you please proceed?
Hello?
We can hear you. Can you please proceed?
Yeah, my name is Francis Emmett. I live at Nine Swift Terrace, East Boston. I've been living there about 40 years. And I'm, I think the building, the house next door will be an upgrade for the street and the neighborhood. I really think it would make the place look nice.
Thank you, sir.
Caroline?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Caroline, and I live at 15 Swift Terrace, which is two houses down in a new development that was built in 2018. And we have three units and three parking spaces and a guest parking space out back. So it's been a concern in the neighborhood about the units to parking ratio, and David and Evan have been very thoughtful in sizing down their proposal so that was five units to five parking spaces. I really like that they're working with Tree East, which is a program offered through the community to enhance the canopy in East Boston, which is really helpful with the airport and all the exhausts and fumes we get from the transportation. Also, like, how respectful these developers have been to the people on the street, and they have been very thoughtful, and they came right around and introduced themselves right in the beginning of this whole procedure. So I'm in favor of this, and I'm.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bartlett.
No additional raise hands.
I see Elaine Donovan.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elaine Donovan with Councilor Colletta's office. There's been significant changes to the project, and based on community feedback and a split decision by the corresponding neighborhood, the group, Councilor Colletta is in support at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raise hands?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lucas, do you just want to address your abutters question or comment?
And also, Madam Chair, if Mr. Lucas can also just quickly mention whether he has a direct abutter support of one, I believe, not nine Swift Street and the property at the rear located at 447 Frankfurt Street.
Yes, and number nine was Mr. Fran Emmett, who was on the phone. Then David Lang, can you address the one at rear? I know that you were working with those folks a lot.
Yes, 447 Frankfurt Street is directly to our rear, and we weren't able to get in touch with the, there are three condominium units. We weren't able to get in touch with the first two floors, but the third floor was very communicative with us. They were very concerned about their view, actually. So we performed a height study and did modify the building in order to have it sit a little bit lower on the grade so as to allow a full story above our building so that their view would be completely unimpacted. And they actually did provide a letter of support for the project, which has been submitted to the ZBA public input.
Okay, and you had the support of one and nine, correct?
We have, we have the support of nine, and one remain neutral.
Okay, great, thanks. No further questions.
And then I'm not sure, Madam Chair, if you wanted me to address, there was a statement made, I didn't really hear a question about the one-bedroom on the ground floor, but if Pedro, the architect, could just describe it, it's a one-bedroom apartment of approximately 660 square feet that shares the ground floor with, in part, the parking area. So I'm not sure what the question was.
Okay.
That's what, that's what that is.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to move forward with a motion of approval. I think that, given its location on a corner, you know, right approximated to cemetery, to some residential, to some open area, I think the block can take a little bit more of the density that is being requested. So I'm moving forward with a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1481099. The address of 222 Bowen Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Marancy, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the applicant Anthony Monahan, as well as the architect Eric Zachrisson. This is a proposal to combine two parcels to erect a new four-story building with four residential units, which will be homeownership. The new lot size will be approximately 2,289 square feet with approximately 5,533 square feet of living space. This is going to require relief for insufficient lot size as well as the floor area ratio. 5,000 square feet of lot size will be required for the four units in this sub-district. Further, we are proposing a 2.36 FAR, and a 2.0 is what is compliant but consistent with some recently approved projects within this neighborhood. Our proposal is located within a multifamily residential zoning sub-district. The current site consists of an existing dilapidated single-family as well as a vacant lot that is being combined. The ground floor will consist of a parking garage on the left side for two full-size vehicles along with a mechanical room. Unit one will be located to the adjacent of the ground level parking, which will consist of a one-bedroom, one-bath, living room, and a kitchen with an estimated square footage of 665 square feet. Unit two, approximately 1,440 square feet, is located on the second floor, which will consist of a three-bedroom, two-bath, and an open-concept kitchen, dining, and living room. There will also be a small balcony located off the rear of the property. Unit three and unit four will range from approximately 1,330 square feet to 1,360 square feet, which will be a bi-level unit on the third and fourth floor. Both units will consist of three-bedroom, two-bath, and an open-concept kitchen, dining, and living room. There will also be small balconies located only on the third level off of the front of the property. We have additional violations for building height. We were cited for excessive height, but I believe this was an error as 40 feet is compliant in this sub-district, and the proposal calls for exactly 40 feet. Further, we were cited for the max allowed height on a parcel due to a text amendment to the zoning code that when demolishing that existing structure, that structure's height is the max. That is a valid violation. Again, the proposal calls for 40 feet, which is compliant under Article 68. We were cited for an open space violation. Again, we believe this was an error during the review. We were required to provide 200 square feet per unit, and the proposal calls for 1,005 square feet, approximately 684 square feet on the ground level, 98 square feet on level two, and 223 square feet on level three. We have a violation front yard. The existing conditions of the homes on the street provide zero setback. However, due to the narrowness of the sidewalk on these small side streets of South Boston, they are approximately three feet wide. And the BPDAs recommendation was proposed to change to provide approximately an additional setback. We provided two feet additional to allow for more of a front yard setback and a five-feet sidewalk accessibility path on this street, unlike any other of these recently approved projects. Again, they were all provided at a zero-foot setback on the front yard. Rear yard violation this parcel is subject to the shallow lot, which would require us to comply with a 15-foot setback, and the proposal calls for seven feet, which is contextual to the surrounding dwellings. Lastly, we were cited for insufficient parking maneuverability. We're providing two full-size garage parking spaces, which is in line with the city's new guidelines for reducing dependency on private vehicles. However, during the community process, we requested to provide more parking. The owner entered into a lease agreement for the abutting property that has parking for a three-year lease to provide an additional off-site parking space for these units. And lastly, one thing I'd like to highlight, that the description stated roof decks, and again, those roof decks were actually removed during the community process. That was one of the big concerns with the neighbors. So at this point, I'm going to pause for any questions, comments, or concerns from the board.
Great, thank you, Mr. Spitz. Questions from the board?
I just want confirmation that you're, that you're, that you're building alliance with the property on the left in terms of its front yard modality versus the left?
So the left side, if you're looking at the building on, directly on, the left-hand side is an actual vacant lot. And then the garage space on the right, the building actually will not be in the line anymore according to the BPDAs recommendations. Originally, it was aligned at the zero-foot setback, but we actually allowed for a setback to increase the sidewalks in these small streets in South Boston that only allow for a three-foot wide sidewalk.
So if you go to the site plan, I'm not.
That should be on the last page.
Right, in the site plan, the two, I'm seeing two buildings, one building, yep, right here. So the property line is, I'm not seeing buildings right on the property line.
Correct.
Either to the building on the right, it seems like it's set around two foot.
Yes. So we're actually, we're actually setback and an additional two feet to allow for the three-foot, to allow for an actual five-foot wide sidewalk for accessibility.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you are improving the sidewalk accessibility or that it is close, it's similar to the adjacent property?
Yes, we are improving the sidewalk accessibility.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the final time, I'm Anna Wade with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for 222 Bowen Street on May 31, 2023. Around half a dozen abutters attended the meeting. Concerns were raised about parking and shadows. Subsequently, the proponent added additional parking and conducted a shadow study, which was shared with the abutters. ONS has received 22 letters of support, and the City Side Neighborhood Association is remaining neutral because, in their words, "The proponent has removed the roof decks and secured several abutting parking spaces for at least three years." At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calveron from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process, compromises on quality of life issues like the removal of roof decks, and increasing the front setback for accessibility. The councilor respectfully asks that the proponent continue working with the community on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calveron.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the City Council judge, Michael Flaherty. Although there was significant communal effort that went into drafting Article 68 to our project that do warrant merit, council feels that this is one of them. He'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
I'm trying to have no raise hands.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kian Seacleton from Council Murphy's office. The applicant completed a thorough community process and has worked with the abutters to gain support. Because of this, the councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
We'd like to put forward a motion to approve with BPDAs review.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Stonebridge?
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1391838, with the address of 18R Plain Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Mr. Higgins with us?
One second.
You used to have a question?
Yeah.
I'll just use this opportunity to remind folks that we are a six-member board and will become a five-member board at about 2:20. Please proceed.
Does anyone speak on behalf of the project?
Hey, good afternoon, Madam Chair, my members of the board. My name is David Higgins with an address of 12R Plain Street in Dorchester. Hopefully, I won't keep you, keep you guys too long. Please go to the, Madam Ambassador, go to the first slide, which is the, the plans, please.
That's good news, folks. I don't know, is that Mr. Higgins typing? I'm not sure.
No, 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 Madam.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, members of the board, this is a proposed single-family home of approximately 2,000 square feet. On the first floor is entry door, to the right I have half bathroom. In front is a living room. I have a kitchen and a dining room. Then I walk, we walk up the stairs to the second floor, where we have three bedrooms and two bathrooms, with a master bedroom and a bathroom for the two adjacent bedrooms. On the third floor, I have a bonus room with a bathroom and have some storage space. This house is, you know, we can move down to the, just a little bit lower to the city elevations, Madam Ambassador. In, in my thinking, this was, because it's at the rear of the property, and I have just finished a property just similar to this, close across the, the lots. My thinking is a barn style of, of a, of a house, so it looks like, like a, like a barn. Again, if this is approved, maybe we can talk to the PPDAs design review and maybe fine-tune something that would work. But again, it's a single-family home. If we could just move that, move to the first site plan, Madam Ambassador? Okay, thank you. Members of the board, Madam Chair, this, this is, this lot is kind of a, a pork chop lot. It's up in the corner, in the top right-hand corner of, of eight, number 18, Plain Street, which is now 18R. But the, the lot size is approximately 8,688 square feet. This area is F1 5,000. I have approximately, have approximately 3,680 square feet for the lot. My, I have some, I have some violations, which is two homes on the one lot, which nothing we can do. The lot size is, is, as I said, 8,000. I have approximately 3,600 and, 3,668 square feet for this lot, if it's subdivided from the 5,000 square feet of the number 18. My setbacks is, you know, side yard setback is 10 feet. I have 10 feet on my right side, and I have approximately 17 feet on the left side. And my rear setback is 25 feet. I have approximately 20 feet. I would like to just, can talk a little bit about, about these other houses that I have built. In 2020, I built, and, which is Lot A, it was an as-of-right lot, it's a single-family home on 5,000 square feet. It is now finished and rented. I, Lot B, which is 18 and 18R, I built in 2021, as-of-right lot as well. It's appraised as, as 8,868, 888 square feet. And Lot B2 is actually 16 Plain Street. Again, this was an as-of-right lot, built it in 2022, early '23. It is finished and it is rented to doctors. I, I came to this board maybe over a year and a half ago to seek approvals for number 12R, which is at the top left-hand side. If you can, if, actually, it's on, on, it's on your bottom right. I, I seek approval and got approved for number 12R, which I have moved into myself. It is, it is a five-bedroom, it's a four-bedroom, actually, four-bedroom home, and I resided in it myself. I, I didn't get approvals from ZBA. Just to get back to number six, number 18R, Madam Ambassador, if you could go to the geothermal site for, for one second, just so I, I'd like to just hit on, hit on. This, this, I plan to use geothermal heat for number 16, which is, which is reducing my carbon footprint to almost zero. We don't use gas, and you know, I think it's the future of the city. I, I haven't heard much, many houses or many, many developers talking about this today in, in their presentations, but again, we, we plan to do geothermal heat, which, which puts pipes about anywhere from 300 to 400 feet into the ground and takes up the heat from the ground in the, in this, in the winter and puts the, the heat down into the ground in the summer. So again, you know, this would be a, a great, a great opportunity to do this, and hopefully I can, I can do this, I can add this to some of the other houses that I've built. So again, that's geothermal. If, if members of the board want to ask me some questions about that later on, I'm, I'm happy to answer it, but. Finally, members of the board, if we could go to site plan number, Ambassador, site plan number two, which is the green, it's, it's the green. It's a, it should be next one down. No. That's the, yeah, that's number three, Madam Ambassador. There should be one with, that shows green spaces. Wait, okay, can't seem to, can't seem to find that.
Okay, well, can we pause here then, and let's see if board members have any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to turn it over to public testimony.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cockram with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. Our office held an abutters meeting on May 3 this year, where, where 14 people were in attendance and all were opposed to the project. In addition, I have received 11 emails in opposition to the project, as well as a petition containing 19 signatures from abutters who are in opposition. Additionally, there are seven letters of support among four houses on file with the ZBA as of July 2023. In this area, there are two civic associations. One civic opposed the project previously, and another civic association does not take stances on development. Thus, there are no letters of support or opposition from this group. At this time, we'd like to defer to this board's judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGarrick in City Council, Frank Baker's office. We're in opposition to this project today, mainly because all of the abutters are not supporting the project. I don't know if the board recalls, but when this applicant had applied for the Plain Street R12 location, he communicated to the neighbors that he would keep the rest of it as open space and, and really big backyards. And now he has come back and asked for an additional house, so the neighbors think it was disingenuous. It will kill those backyards on this street, and for that reason, we're in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the City Council judge, Michael Flaherty. Edgar Winston is the Council Baker's office, Council Bill Regan in opposition.
Okay, we done with the elected officials? What else? Okay, I'll go to, did we hear from Mark Lynch?
Look, we have him.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Mr. Lynch?
Hold your hand.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
My name is Mark Lynch. I'm a resident of 28 Saranack Street, a neighbor, and I fully support the development of the single-family at 18R Plain Street. Dave has done great work before, and I think that if allowed, he'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Dr. Dazman Gay?
Good afternoon. I'm sorry, good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Apaya Dazman Gay, and I reside in 20 Plain Street. I am in support of David Higgins' work. This is my second year in Boston. I work at Boston Public Schools, and I'm a single mother with two children, one in college, the other one in high school. It's been an awesome opportunity to live on that street specifically, and, and the house David has done something amazing job, he's a great landlord, and he's functioned very well with other houses as well. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, and then Suzanne.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Christopher Lundy of 12 Plain Street, and I fully support David Higgins' building. I've been a tenant for him for about four years, and I think he's made the neighborhood a lot better, and, well, just still is good, but it just, just looks really nice. I think that it's raising the property value of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Hello, my name's Suzanne Sweeney. I live at 31 Rosaria Street, so I'm a direct abutter, and I vehemently oppose...
I'm sorry, what happened to Ms. Sweeney?
Um, I, I'm in opposition.
Oh, okay, sorry. Did, did you get to finish your points?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, Lauren and Chris?
Hello, my name is Martin Sweeney. I live at 31 Rosaria Street. I am a direct abutter. Actually, I will be a direct abutter of this proposed house. It will be directly behind my home. The only people speaking in support of this project are actually tenants of Mr. Higgins and a neighbor that lives a nine-minute walk away. Now, that's a nine-minute walk away, according to Google Maps. The neighbors are in opposition to this project because Mr. Higgins has been disingenuous throughout the five-year process of all of these homes. When he built the first two homes on Plain Street, he had promised off-street parking in the rear. We still haven't seen that. If, if anybody wants to see current photos of the site, I can show you some abandoned vehicles. He's apparently already started digging a hole of some kind, possibly for the geothermal. The green space promised has not been delivered on, and he's just been a, he's been a bad neighbor, disingenuous throughout this whole process, has cried poor mouth throughout the entire thing, and I believe the lot size he referenced is not accurate. So if, if it's possible, I was wondering if we could get him to submit a, an actual stamped site plan with, with the actual, actual lot measurements. And with regards to 12R Plain Street, I'm not sure he has an occupancy permit on that yet. That was an historic barn that he tore down without permission and claimed afterwards got approval, retroactively. He, he really just can't be trusted. He hasn't been faithful to the neighbors. Again, I am in opposition, along with all of the other direct abutters that aren't tenants.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Patrick, you just raised your hand?
Good afternoon, my name is Patrick Allen. I live at 106 Oakton Ave. I'm in opposition to this project for the sole purpose of, last time that the ZBA met, Mr. Higgins was asked to present or come back to the direct abutters and also the neighbors, which he did not do. So for that reason, I oppose the project.
Thank you. Any other ways? No, sorry. No problem. Do you want to briefly respond to that before we turn to board members?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. I'm actually taken back by the, by the, by the, all them comments. I would just like to give a brief, brief synopsis of who I am. I've been building in Dorchester for...
Can you please focus on just the, the comments they made directly about your project, this project, please?
Okay, well...
You've already presented.
Yeah, this is, this is a stamped, this, this drawn, that, the drawn that the, that the board sees is a stamped drawn, it doesn't get, it doesn't get reviewed unless it's stamped, so ISD can, can review the, the stamped plan, so that is the legit size of the lots. In regards to meeting with, with the abutters, I, I've tried on, on many occasions, I've been, I've, I've lived here and I've worked here for the last seven years. Some of these, these abutters that are, that who live behind me, they refuse to communicate and, and have a conversation about, you know, a realistic conversation about what we should do, what we should do there. There's, there's, you know, it is a huge lot, it's almost 32,000 square feet.
Mr. Higgins, could I, could I ask you to respond to the comment about your commitment previous to building this, to not building on this lot? Can you respond to that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, you know, things have, things have changed. We have had COVID since that, people are working from home. You know, this, this, this single-family house would, would, would work here. You know, I, I, as I said, I, I would try to meet with, with people all the time, and, and I'm, if people want to, want to talk to me, I'm, I'm, I'm working on site, I work on site six, seven days a week here. So if people want to talk to me, I'm, I'm happy to...
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval, approval with BPDAs design review.
Is there a second?
I will second that, and the reasons I'll support that are, I think the setbacks are reasonable, they're maintaining the open space around the proposed dwelling, and I think there's an opportunity with design review to make it appear more as accessory. I think they've tried to do that with the footprint, and maybe can get there with the height and that half-story above the second story.
Okay, Mr. Stonebridge?
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries. Next case.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
We move on now to one, hearing scheduled for 1:00 p.m. The first is case BOA 1465504, with the address...
That was a bad job. That was a bad job.
With the address of 9 Amory Street, is the applicant and their represent, or their representative present to explain?
You should be ashamed of yourself. Can you please mute those who aren't presenting?
Good afternoon, Kevin Joyce, City Hall Office, Boston, for the proponent, Judge Georges, the proponent, and, and the French, our architect, and who will make the presentation.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think it's, we would need to let them know that it can be a five-member board for our presentation, I think.
Yep, yep, yes.
My instructions are, go ahead with the five-member board, so we'll go ahead with the five-member board.
Okay, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you.
And, and French?
Thank you. Yes. Hello, Madam Chair, and, and board, I apologize, due to the time change, I am in an Uber on my way to the airport. I hope my sound is okay with all of you.
Yes.
We, all good, thank you. So what you see before you is a single-family, three-story house proposed in the northwest section of... section of Charlestown. If you could possibly go to the first image in the drawing set, I can explain a little bit about the context very quickly, and I'll start that. So this is on Armory Street, which is a dead-end street. I wonder if you have the, the drawing set by any chance? I'm so sorry, Madam.
The drawings are on the screen. We have the plot plan on the screen.
Yes, I'm hoping we could go to the next.
The next slide, please.
Thank you, exactly. So this is a fairly, oh, yep, that first slide with just the context. I'll be very quick. This is a unique site in Charlestown in that in 1917, the street was cut off for the building of the Charlestown Battalion Army, Armory, which left this site as a demolished site with a turnaround at the end. So this is right now a site that is not being, it's underutilized and has some different proportions from its neighbors. We have, it is a 1,122 square foot site. We're proposing 1,600 square feet of livable space. A parking space takes up 170 square feet at the ground floor and 420 square feet of basement storage space, not living space. We have, we are asking, excuse me, we are offering a, to the community and to the greater good of the city, that this is an all-electric building, and we are utilizing an existing curb cut, which is unique to many of the parcels in Charlestown. Due to the proportions of the lot and also the, the performance required of this building, we are requesting a small variance of three feet or, three feet into the rear yard setback. We are a shallow lot, so the requirement is 15 feet. We are at 12 feet. And we also, as a point of, a strange point of note, the lot width is five one-hundredths of a foot off of the 20-foot requirement. Given the history of the site, we are hopeful that the board will see favorably on those five one-hundredths of a foot. So in the process, we've met with our neighbors on several occasions, both before and after filing our application, and as a result, we've been able to shrink significantly two things. The original setback proposal was 10 feet. We moved it to 12 feet, and the original height was at 35 feet, which is as a bright, but we moved it to 33 feet, which is a curb request from the neighbors at the rear. I will say that with the character of all of the buildings in the area, we have tried to keep them that character while also anchoring this unique corner, the end of a street, which has not gotten a lot of attention in years past compared to its neighbors and is starting to be able to get that attention coming to its own. And then the last thing I'll say is that the variance for the rear yard that we are seeking is really in keeping with the character. There are many, many additions to many of the surrounding buildings that make the rear yards even smaller than that 12 feet. Thank you.
You?
Oh, I'm so sorry, and I didn't.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I didn't ask to advance to the next slide because I am on a tiny screen. I could, if you want me to walk you through, I will, I will defer to the board on what they would like to hear.
Questions from the board? Anything else useful to view? Okay, I'm going to pause and open it for public testimony for now?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Green with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and a butters' meeting was held for 9 Armory Street on July 25th. It was well-attended. Residents had concerns with the size and scope of the proposed project. This office has received four letters in support and one in opposition, which was sent by the Charlestown Preservation Society, whose objections pertain to lot width, the rear yard, open space, and design. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
You? Patrick?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Sweeney. I'm an attorney 261 Main Street, Charlestown. I would represent immediate abutters Dana and Rachel Wolfelt. They live at 55 Baldwin Street and own that property. The, my clients opposed the project based on the fact that the structure is much too large and not appropriate for this lot. I think that's evidenced by the number and type of variances that are required. I'd also note, I'm not sure if the board will be reading in the letter of the Charlestown Preservation Society, where they, they listed at least four different problems they have with it, and they went on to note that it's incompatible with Plan Charlestown, which is just wrapping up now, including aspects of rear yard setback, open space, as well as the elimination of off-street parking for residential buildings under 6, and the prohibition against garages off of a Main Street entrance. But Charlestown Preservation went on to suggest they would support a variance that eliminates the parking, and that at this point, they ask that the request be denied. I'm also not sure if the BPDA finding and suggestion of denial will be read into the record. They too suggest that it be denied, although they suggest it be denied without prejudice. They too are concerned about the rear yard setback, the lack of open space, the problem with the side yard setback, and they also suggest that the garage entrance needs to be relocated off of the public street. In addition, I filed with the board the lien disposition agreement for this property. That's an agreement between the then Boston Redevelopment Authority and the property owner. Section 302 of that agreement, which the board now has, limits the use of this property to parking and landscaping. It seems to me to be somewhat unique that we have a situation here where this board is being asked to grant variances to allow a structure be built on a property that another city agency has said no structure, no structure should be built. The, you know, BPDA slash BRA has this down as open space, and I think the opposition by BPDA speaks to that, as does the opposition by the Charlestown Preservation Society. And my client, there have been meetings. The changes were an increase of two feet in the rear yard. I don't think that that's extremely significant in the lowering of.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, I am, in the lowering of the height by two feet. For all those reasons, and for the reasons set forth in those communications that have been filed with the board, I'd ask that the request be denied.
No additional questions at the moment. Jeff, I don't know. You can, can you address the Hampton from BPDA? Can you address the LDA comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, for the Hampton BPDA. If there is an LDA, that limits the use of this. That would have to be changed to allow this proposal to go forward. I wasn't made aware of one, but we do have staff here at the agency who's sole responsibility is to keep the LDAs and the urban renewal plans here, so that's something that would have to be looked at.
But that being said, what was your recommendation, and do you stand by it?
So, yes, we stand by our recommendation. It was denied without prejudice. The setbacks were inappropriate. We'd like to increase open space and increase permeable surface space. Also, we're not in favor of the parking garage being on the street, so we recommend it denied without prejudice.
Good, thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Joyce, do you, can you quickly respond to those comments about the LDA and, you know, other, other comments?
Basically, on the LDA, my client was advised by the BPDA to go forward on the variance before they would entertain a negotiation on the LDA to release the restrictive provision, which is normal practice. I'm told the BPDA makes you go to the board, get your zoning variance first, and then come back and renegotiate the, renegotiate the LDA and pay the release fee and go on your way and build your house. And I'd also suggest that, quite frankly, based on what I know of this, the parking is something that's been requested by all of the neighbors on the street, and other than the two people that are opposing it, and to build it in such a way that it's an all-electric house, it needs that extra space in the back to accommodate it, and it is a shallow lot, and it's different and peculiar from all the other lots on the street. So I really think that would have to say.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'm so sorry, Madam Chair.
Sorry. Is there, is there a motion? Architect, I'm sorry.
Yeah, might I answer one of the questions from Attorney Sweeney and the architect? Is that possible?
Briefly, since I have a motion? Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I will just say that I am on the Plan Charlestown IAG, and I do know that specifically they're looking for, when possible, putting a parking spot, garage door on the side lot. It's not possible on this lot. The lot is too shallow to put a par in sideways, and yes, all of the neighbors requested that there be a parking lot, a parking spot kept on site.
Okay. May I have a motion?
May I ask a question before making a motion? I know that there's some passageways on the lot plan, and I'm just concerned about those relative to the setbacks. Can you speak to what those passageways are, or, you know, what purpose they serve?
Absolutely. The original easement is a backyard easement for access. As I have learned, that was originally for horses, in fact, but now, of course, is a means of egress for some other buildings. We've maintained the 4-foot width and a minimum, actually it's much higher than this, but a minimum of 7 feet of height for that means of egress for the others.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I will put forth a motion to deny without prejudice. I, I stand with the BPDA's recommendation. I think there's some more work that could be done here regarding the location of the garage and increasing some of those setbacks.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better, oh, sorry. Skip, skip. All right, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Next case.
Next, we have, you, next, we have two companion cases, the first being BOA 1484079 with the address of 46 Montgomery Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1501802 with the address also of 46 Montgomery Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
And that might be John. He's just joining as a panelist, so he may be muted for a second. John, is that you?
Yeah, John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, with the mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Madam Chair, we are seeking both G card and building code relief. Would you prefer that I move on the G card first?
Sure, we can do them together.
Okay. This is a gut rehab of a building which triggered G card requirements. The stamped water and sewer plans, plus the water and sewer compliance letter, and the old harmless letter from the engineers have been duly propagated, complying with the procedure for the board to consider the issuance of a G card permit.
We can treat them as companion cases if you want to proceed.
Yes. On the building code, if we scroll down to the end of the permits, the, the plan, what we have proposed is a roof access hatch, which is a common, if we could scroll. No, if we could back up to the showing the roof deck, I'm sorry. Up one more, please. No, one more. No, we're still unstructured. Here we are. What we are proposing is the customary hatch as access to a roof deck. As designed, it complies with the zoning code and meets all the dimensional requirements. However, under the state building code, a headhouse is required. If a headhouse was proposed, it would create a zoning violation, and it would also alter the profile of the roof in the street profile. The property is in the South End Landmarks District. It is an accredited building of historic significance by the Secretary of Interior. It is under the jurisdiction of the South End Landmarks Commission. What we are seeking is the customary access, which the board grants on a regular basis to permit access to the roof by a hatch, which is a very common means of egress and suggests that it would not create an unsafe condition. It would preserve the uniformity of the street scape, which is one of the determining aspects of the South End Landmarks designation. Submit that the hatch is an acceptable compliance alternative to this renovation of the, in change of occupancy to a single-family dwelling, which will be fully sprinkled. As a gut rehabilitation, it must comply with the new construction requirements. The building will remain within the range of all fire equipment and safety vehicles, and for those reasons, we request that the board grant a variance to install a hatch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to turn it over to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted a butters' meeting on June of 2023. There were no opposition from abutters present, and unaware of any letters in support or opposition that we've received. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have a letter from Council President Flink's office. The council would like to go on recording support based on known issues having been reported by neighbors, abutters, and the Ellis Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Seminole Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G card letters from the out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional questions. Great.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could suggest, these are two separate applications, which I would think require two separate votes.
Javier, I was going to suggest we vote on them together, but you tell me.
Yeah, we can do it all in one motion, just say with a motion of approval for G card and motion of approval for building code. That's what the board votes on.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the G card letter and no building code relief.
May I have a second?
I'm sorry. Did you say no building code? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
He needs building code relief, I think, is the point.
That's correct.
Are you saying no building code or building code relief?
Building code.
Building code.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes, so building code.
Thank you. May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1480829. The address was 15 Revere Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Coltien Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me today is Jeff Rand from Irving Revere LLC. You could see the building that we're in question. Madam Ambassador, if you could just scroll back up quickly. This is the building here on the corner of Revere Street and Garden Street. Jeff, Mr. Rand has owned the building since 2003, so for about 20 years. The storefront that you could see here right at the corner has been vacant since 2020, so right around COVID and has, you know, that's the reason for the request of change the occupancy here from residential, to residential, excuse me, for this space. Next slide. I'll be very quick, Madam Chair, I promise. I know it's been a long afternoon already. This is just the location of the project. Again, it's in the Boston proper zoning district. It's on the corner of Revere Street and Garden Street and Irving Street as well. You can see here, it's in an H265 zoning sub-district, which allows residential, and it's in the Beacon Hill Historic District. Next slide. Again, this is just the request in front of the board today. We do need zoning relief for off-street parking insufficient because we are technically adding two residential units and also usable open space insufficient, again, because we are adding two residential units. There's no expansion to the existing building envelope. Both of these units would just be in the space of a former laundry area and storage area. Next slide. I'm sorry, laundry and office space. I apologize, I misspoke. This is just the existing floor plan, only showing you the one floor that's changed out of the whole building. You can see on the right-hand side that office space and the commercial space as it is today, which would be changed to residential. There is a residential unit already on this floor on the left-hand side of the page. Next slide. And this is just the proposed, again, same floor plan, same garden level. You can now see the two extra dwelling units on the lower level, Unit 11, on the lower part of the screen, Unit 12 on the top, just taking the place of those two other spaces that were there, the laundry space and the office space. Next slide. This is just to show the board just the specific spaces we're looking at changing. You can see plenty of light and air, plenty of availability. The space on the right is that former commercial laundry looking out onto the street from the back corner. Next slide. I refuse a letter, just so you could see it. Again, off-street parking insufficient, usable open space insufficient. Both of these are just a matter of changing that existing space in the building from office and laundry to two residential units. Next slide, I believe it's just, which the board has a copy of, and I'm sure the Mayor's Office will speak to. It's just a letter of non-opposition from the Beacon Hill Civic Association, who we met with in August. And I believe, next slide, it's just a thank you slide. And again, no expansion to the existing building envelope. All the renovations, redesign, kind of reconfiguration will be within the building. It's currently underutilized and vacant space, which we're just looking to better use. We've tried to find a commercial tenant for the space, and we've been unable to do it due to, you know, market changes since COVID. So the thought was to change this area within the building to residential units. So, Madam Chair, thank you. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
A question for, is Mr. Hampton still here from the BPD?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so I have a question from, thank you. I have a question from the BPD memo. There is a recommendation about having a housing agreement. What is that related to?
I think Mrs. Cizula probably knows when you increase the number of dwelling units where it's an IDP, he may just want to reach out to the housing compliance just to make sure it doesn't trip anything. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hampton. Board member Valencia, this is only a net increase of two units. So, and these existing residential units have been there for decades. So our understanding is this would not trigger the inclusionary development policy because this is just a net increase of two units. What's there now is, I believe even, I would assume predates the zoning code. It certainly predates the IDP. So this would not, our understanding is this would not trigger any inclusionary commitment as a result.
Okay, thank you.
But we will certainly review that, if I may. We will certainly, obviously, review that with the BPD.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. May I open it up to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some bad information on the community process. ONS hosted an abutters meeting where no concerns were raised by those present. The applicant went on to meet with the Beacon Hill Civic Association's zoning and licensing board, which is in non-opposition to this proposal. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. We'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I will make a motion of approval. I'm just unclear how to upward the proviso for the housing agreement if it's necessary.
I would suggest that there be no language for housing agreement until I can get confirmation from you from either our housing compliance or from Attorney Cizula. I wouldn't want to put a proviso on there and then have to come back.
Well, could I suggest BPD review? And that way you can address it that way, Mr. Hampton? Are you, does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, this will be able to get pulled out.
That way, if it doesn't need review, you won't bother.
Perfect.
How's that, Ms. Weewell?
Yeah, so the motion is to approve with BPD review as well as any another proviso that any work, exterior work be approved by the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission.
Here, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Before the next, reading the next case, we are down to a five-member board. So people do have a chance to defer if they want to for the one of the next two cases. And with that, move on to case BOA 1447612 with the address of 591 Albany Street. Is the, which this is a cannabis case. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, Leslie Delaney-Halkins with the law firm of Prince Lavelle, having a business address of One International Place in Boston. With me is Charlotte Hannah, the founder and CEO of the applicant entity. If it pleases the board, I'll give a high-level overview as there is no construction associated with this, and then I'm happy to review the plans. This is an existing medical cannabis establishment that has been in operation for several years. These plans were previously approved by a prior iteration of this board. The only change we're seeking to make today is to collocate both adult use and medical use at the site. There's absolutely no changes to the layout, the hours of operation, or any of the other operational items. Presently, this establishment is 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Again, we will be maintaining those hour of operation. We have seven point of sale service areas, which will be maintained. There are 14 interior cameras, which are operating 24/7, as well as two exterior cameras. Obviously, no color consumption is permitted, and the establishment maintains duplicate security measures. Again, this was approved previously by the Cannabis Control Commission and the Boston Cannabis Board for a change in beneficial interest. This establishment has been operating as liberty compassion, moving to that affinity, and is bringing on new partners and rebranding as Community Work Partners Boston, doing business in the, as Ravel Bell. And that is a women and minority-owned vertically-integrated company that has an existing establishment in Great Barrington. We have conducted significant community outreach, including meeting with the Civic Association, elected officials and other stakeholders, and have only received positive feedback. Again, there are no changes to the floor plan or any construction. But we've obtained a letter of support from the Civic, as well as from Council President Flare, uh, Council President, Council President Flynn, and the office of Michael Flaherty, Councilman Michael Flaherty. And with that, I'm happy to go through the plans, even though there are no changes, or we're happy to answer any questions.
Let's pause and see if there are questions from the board. Hearing none, I'm actually, let me open it to public process, and we can go from there.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Chrisili from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting in May, where support was shown from the abutters, and they also received support from the Blackstone Franklin Square Neighborhood Association. And they're also known as good neighbors by the community, and everyone's looking forward to this addition. At this time, I'd just like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have a letter on from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support and provided a support letter to the board based on a good community process. The proposal also has supported, has support the Blackstone Franklin Neighborhood Association for many reasons, including the activation of this area, upgrades to the building, and track record being a responsive and good neighbor in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raise hands?
Yep, no raised hands, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And last on the list is case BOA 1485817 with the address of 521 Cambridge Street. This is an Article 80 project. Will I ask if the applicant and/or, is the applicant and/or representative present to explain?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Johanna Schneider with the law firm of Hemmway &amp; Bar in 75 State Street. With me on the Zoom today are Milad and Mani Farahani, the developers, and Rob Del Savia and Ryan Sprague, who embarked the project architect. We are here today with a proposal to replace an existing used car dealership on Cambridge Street in Alston with 33 units of rental housing, which includes five IDP units. This is really an ideal site for a residential project of this scale. It's a short walk to the MBTA Green Line, numerous stations, several bus routes, and the MBTA commuter rail. It is also walking distance to a major neighborhood commercial area. As noted, this was an Article 80 small project review project. We worked closely with BPD staff during the course of that review in order to leverage this transit-rich location by providing no onsite parking while focusing on promoting the use of biking and walking. And we're also contemplating and providing a robust TDM program that will include providing each new tenant with a $300 voucher for the mode of transportation of their choice. Consistent with several of the newer developments in the immediate vicinity, the building will be six stories. It will have an FAR of 3.64. The project also includes approximately 1,000 square feet of tenant amenity space and 34 secure bike parking spaces. The project will be providing over 2,000 square feet of open space, and we are significantly increasing landscaped and previous area on site. In terms of unit mix, we're proposing a mix of studios and one, two, and three-bedroom units. There will be six studios, 18 one-bedrooms, seven two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms. So in response to community comments, we have a relatively low number of studio units compared to comparable projects in the neighborhood, and all of the units will be generously sized. As I said, five of the units will be IDP units at the 70% AMI level. That includes a three-bedroom unit that will create an opportunity for families, and that was specifically added at the encouragement of Council Brayden's office. We're really pleased to have been able to do that. In terms of unit count, we have more than 15% onsite affordable, and by square footage, it's close to 18% affordable. The project is also providing a number of public benefits, including providing all-electric building systems and closing existing curb cuts on the site, as well as implementing multiple enhancements to the public realm, such as new landscaping and street trees. In addition to dramatically improving the public realm, closing these two existing curb cuts, which are approximately 60 feet in width, allows us to address a concern that we've heard from the neighborhood and that we know is an important issue citywide, which has to do with the neighborhood impacts of drop-offs and deliveries on the local street network. We've spoken with BTD, and we've requested that what is currently curb-cut space in front of the building be subject to short-term parking restrictions in order to accommodate deliveries, move-ins, move-outs, and ride-share pick-ups at the site. They've had no objection to it to date. We have requested that the duration of that be approximately 15 minutes. Another benefit I should mention is that we will be making an in-kind contribution to the city's Route 57 study, which is an offshoot of the Alston Bright Mobility Study. We've undergone a robust review process, including multiple presentations to the Alston Civic Association, two community meetings, meetings with Council Brayden's office, and we were unanimously approved by the BPD board on June 15. We've also provided to this board seven letters of support from neighbors. The project site is split between two zoning districts, the CC1 and the 1F3000. We do require dimensional relief and a conditional use permit for multifamily use. At this point, I know it's been a long day, and we're last up. I'm happy to walk through our compliance with zoning criteria to turn things over to the project architect to present the plans in more detail, or we can just pause and take questions from the board, whatever would be most useful.
I will pause for a minute and see if there are questions from the board. I don't see any questions, so let me open it to public testimony first, and then we can circle back with other questions.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Alston Bright liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office did receive one letter of opposition from a neighbor at 533 Cambridge Street, which the board should have on file. We also did receive a letter of opposition from the Alston Civic Association on the grounds of lack of parking, traffic congestion, public safety, density, no onsite pickup and drop-offs, which they were concerned would conflict with street parking in the dedicated bike and bus lanes. That letter should also be on file for the board. That said, we will take, excuse me, we will defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Maureen McCray from Councilor Brayden's office. The councilor would like to go on record in supporting this project. Thank you.
Tony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony DeZador, representing the Alston Civic Association. The members did vote in opposition to the project. Council did mention a key issue that has been out there since day one, the fact that there's significant lock coverage, there's no parking, and there's no onsite pickup and delivery structure in place. So, as you know, Cambridge Street and Union School of Alston is a very busy intersection, a lot of traffic, bus traffic, all kinds of truck traffic. And the plans for that corridor is to do a bus lane, to do dedicated bike lanes, and of course, you have on-street parking. And the issue with pickup and deliveries on-street certainly conflict in a public safety way with the bike and bus lanes and rush hour traffic and all that. So, density too, which gets to the lock coverage issue. Those issues have been out there since day one, and the membership chose to vote in opposition.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Hi, my name is Sebastian Jamali. I live in the area on 5 Eric Road, Alston, for about five, six years, and I'm in favor for this project. I think it's a great addition to the community. Also, I suppose, you know, the parking issue here, I think is a great opportunity also in a residential area. I think that definitely helps the community out.
Thank you. Mike Minor?
Thank you, my darling ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine are representatives in the carpenters union. On behalf of home restoration members that live and work throughout the city of Boston, I'm going to go and record a support and kudos to the developer for great community outreach on this project.
Thanks. No additional raised hands. Any other questions from the board? Can't see you guys, but hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stunbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anything else? I think we're good.
I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Javier, do you want me to just call you or stay on?
Yeah, you can call me, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks.
If you give me 15, 20 minutes, I just got to run everything down and yeah, do all that stuff.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.